Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Muskogee Municipal Authority, July 22nd, 2024. I guess we'll start with the invocation. Trustee CB Abel.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today seeking your guidance, wisdom, and support as we gather for this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and help nurture the bonds between us and our community. Grant us the grace to listen and the courage to speak truthfully and always with regret and kindness. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
CB Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Okay, item number one, please.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of June 24th, 2024, or take other necessary action.
I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending June 30, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission and the Authority. You do have before you the claims, including the amount retained for capital projects within the MMA. We do recommend approval. Happy to answer your questions.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Okay, this concludes the Muskogee Municipal Authority meeting. Next, we'll call to order the Muskogee City Council meeting, July 22nd, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
CB Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Okay, approval of the minutes. City Council regular session, June 24th, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items one through six. Item number one, please.
We'll do it all in one motion.
Oh, okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on accepting the items one through six. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Okay, on to the regular agenda. Item number seven.
Receive report from Muskogee County Public Transit Authority as to the financial condition, progress, and achievement of providing public transportation, as well as consider approval to renew the cooperative agreement for fiscal year 2024-2025, and take other necessary action.
Good evening, council members and mayor and staff. Thank you so much for having me this evening. My name is Haley Fricks, and I am the Marketing Director for Muskogee County Transit. So I wanted to give a brief overview about Muskogee County Transit specifically for the new council members who might not have been able to have a lot of information about us before or ever seen our facilities. So our tagline for Muskogee County Transit is hashtag #WeDriveMuskogee because we believe that we drive Muskogee forward in helping all of our citizens get to where they need to go in a safe and affordable way. So we are charged with providing public transportation to Muskogee County. We are governed by a Board of Directors that half is picked from the City Council and the other half is picked by the county commissioners. So we receive our funding from the city of Muskogee as well as the county, but that money that the local investment that's given to us from those two entities, they open up a plethora of other funding sources from the Oklahoma Department of Transportation and the Federal Department of Transportation. So you guys' investment really does help drive us forward. Our Board of Directors, they are just incredible, and if they were here tonight, I would give them a huge shout out. They have poured so much into Muskogee County Transit. If you're familiar, if you've been here for a long time, Muskogee County Transit has had its ups and downs, and we are on a really good path right now forward, and that's because of the individuals that you all have given us to lead us, and so we're so thankful for those people that you've given us. We also have 26 amazing employees, and our newest one is here right now, and her name is Ms. Tricia Cook, and she's our new Executive Director. And we are so excited to have Tricia on board with us, so you'll be seeing her more, and I hope that we're able to set up meetings where each of you can get to know Tricia. So here's a list of our services. I'm not going to go through all of our services. I'm just going to go through the ones that I highlighted that specifically kind of pertain more to the city. So the first one is our city routes. So that is this fixed route schedule. So this is where they start at the mall, they go on a fixed route, and you see those buses going around town all day long, right? Nine to four, Monday through Friday. You've probably seen those. So these stops are picked with the help of people like Avery Rigney, with the Streets Commission, and with different citizens that tell us where they need to go. So as you can see on this route right here, there's two routes that actually go to Walmart because, as you can imagine, there's a big need to get groceries. We have a route that specifically is kind of like our health route, so it goes to the Health Department, it goes to St. Francis, it goes to the library, it goes to lots of different places, and that's what we kind of consider a way that we can help bring Muskogee to be whole and well. So another one is our curb-to-curb service. So think Uber, but we're not quite there yet. So you can't just get on an app right now, that's coming, but you can't get on the app right now and just request your ride. You have to call 24 hours in advance, and we will take you wherever you need to go curb-to-curb, and that just costs $4. So it's literally cheaper than the price of gas right now. So that is an amazing service, and that goes anywhere in the city limits. Our next one, it was talked about a few months ago in City Council, but whenever the warden was able to come and talk about the work release program with the prisoners at the Eddie Warrior facility, we are who is giving them the rides to into Muskogee to go to work. So that is an amazing asset that they're having, that they're able to kind of get some freedom and to make their own money, to pay taxes, and to learn, you know, what it's like to go back into the workforce. The next one is our St. Francis Ride Program. So we are working with St. Francis to make sure that our citizens are able to go to chemotherapies, to dialysis, to a doctor's appointment. We work with Sooner Care, Medicare, and Medicaid to make sure that happens along with St. Francis as a whole if a citizen doesn't necessarily have those other options. And lastly, what we're just now starting on, and we're really excited about, is our nonprofit rides. So we saw a big need in the community with nonprofits that some of their clients maybe didn't have a way to safely get to the services that we provide because there are so many amazing services here in Muskogee, so we wanted to try to build that gap. So we're starting with Kidspace, we have some with Green Country, and so we're just kind of opening those doors right now, but I hope next year when I'm standing here, we have a lot more to say about that program. So this is hard to see on the slide, so it's printed on the handout that I gave you guys, and I can also email you a copy if it's hard to see on your printout, but these are our trip stats from October of 2023, which is when our fiscal year starts. So we start October 1st all the way to right now. If I could have fit everything on a graph to show you what last year looked like, we have grown exponentially, and I think a lot of it is due to us getting out there a little bit more, but also the need in the community right now with the economy. That is quite literally cheaper to ride transit than it is to get gas right now. But this is our trip stats for this year, so we also have it broken down by elderly trips, disabled trips, and then who was elderly and disabled. And then those sponsored rides are the rides that I spoke about, like Sooner Care, Medicare, Medicaid, Cherokee Nation, things like that. So these are just screen grabs from our website, but it kind of goes into a little more detail, and it's for you guys to look at on your own, but it talks more about Sooner Care, our Cherokee Nation program, and then our county demand route, which I'm going to talk about next. So we hit every single surface of Muskogee County, starting in January 22nd of this year, that became true. So before January 22nd, we didn't go to Brags and Fort Gibson, and now we do have a route that goes to Brags and Fort Gibson. We go to Porum, we go to Boynton, we go everywhere in the county, and we bring them back to Muskogee. They're able to have three stops in Muskogee for just $2. So it is an amazing thing to bring these people from out of town into Muskogee for them to shop, go to the doctor, bank locally, or whatever they're needing to do. We're able to provide that service so that they are not, you know, landlocked to where they were. A lot of you guys were at our event last year around this time when we were able to unveil that we had the very first electric transit vehicle in Oklahoma, and that is the vehicle, it's a little blurry on your screen, but that is the vehicle that is going around, and it's fully electric, and it's going really well, and we have been praised for that vehicle. So that has kind of given us some recognition, and we're so proud of that. And we are continuing to grow. Like when I talked about the app that we didn't have yet, we did get a grant from the foundation, and we were able to purchase software called EcoLane, which is able to give us an app. It also is able to help our drivers on their shift to be able to have multiple trips. They're not just sitting and waiting for one trip, one person to get out of the doctor or wherever they were. They're able to just get another ride and kind of take those rides during those breaks with this software. And then, again, we're constantly trying to bring more awareness to Muskogee County Transit because we do think that there is a vital need here. And I'll take questions, and if you need to contact me, there's my contact.
Great job.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. If you all look in your agenda packets, there's a cooperative agreement for 2024-2025 fiscal year for the city where we're paying $13,271 a month, which has been budgeted by council for this authority.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve, to renew. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item number eight.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2898, a resolution approving and adopting an amendment to the Muskogee Tourism Authority Bylaws, Section 2.2b1, allowing trustees to serve a seven-year term or take other necessary action.
I sponsored this item, and Counselor Dan Hall and I visited, and I think he's got some good points, so I would like to invite him to offer up some suggestions that he might have.
Well, in the last few weeks, I've received several calls from several citizens in Muskogee. It seems like we are continuing to expand our boards and our trust out to seven years, and these boards and trusts are wanting them to be two seven-year terms if they're voting for it. That's 14 years. That's a lot of time for one person to be on one of our boards and trusts. And so when I'm communicating with all these people about their concerns about stacking boards, they said, what's wrong with the two four-year terms and then off a year? They have to be off a year, and they can come back and be on if they still want to be. And so that gives them eight years to decide if they still want to do it because unless a lot of things have changed, a lot of these people towards the end will start missing a lot of the days and stuff on these councils and these boards and these trusts, and we've got to have some people with some good ideas, some new ideas. And we always talked about getting more and more people involved. You can't get more people, or younger people involved if they're locked up with older people sitting on for seven, 14 years, or sometimes even 21 years on a trust. We can't have it both ways, is what I've been told by our citizens, and I've been sitting here talking to them, and I kind of agree with it. I don't have a problem, and neither do they, if we have two four-year terms, they're off a year, and if they decide they want to come back, they can come back and sign up for another eight, nine years or four years. That's just me and several citizens talking, but I said I can put it before the City Council and see what they think.
Thank you, Dan. My thoughts are that we do somehow, the language in this would be up to two four-year terms. And these terms have to be agreed upon by, number one, their board, and in many cases, the council. So I think that if we have somebody that we don't think is performing well, we can deny nominating them or agreeing to put them on another four years. So I think if we change the language to up to two four-year terms, that might satisfy Mr. Hall's concerns, and...
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
So I want to echo some of the concerns that Counselor Hall has. I think that we're seeing a lot of these requests come up, and I understand some with, like, you know, where some of the business is, but, you know, what I hear is that we're extending terms, so is the problem that the board terms aren't staggered like they should be? I mean, they may come back with a different staggering so they're not having a big exodus of seasoned members, because to say that we need people to continue business is kind of like saying that we don't have other qualified people in Muskogee that can understand it. And I just don't know how much I agree with that. I'd like to actually table this item and have the, because Tourism Board has to kind of discuss this and just say, this is why we'd like to see something a little bit different and see what their terms are, and they can come back and talk to us exactly why they would like this. Whenever this went through Public Works, pretty much went through without any discussions, so we just kind of blanked, you know, passed it forward without knowing exactly why this is being requested 100%.
Could I be recognized? Could we see who their board members are and when their terms expire, like you said, to see that you're not exiting a whole bunch of people at the same time, or?
Well, I don't disagree at all with Counselor Whoos either. What we might do...
Close your microphone, sir.
Thank you. What we might do is table this item and try to learn about how some of these committees are set up and trust authorities and what have you. I'm not certain that it would work for them to do these staggered folks coming on, but it might very well work for them. Maybe for the majority of them, staggering would work, and for a few, it wouldn't work. Now, I have no idea, but I think it is a good idea to reach out to everybody and see exactly how each trust is doing things, and then go from there. So...
Is it possible to make a motion to accept the two four-year terms and then come back and have another item that says less staggered? Because that's something, they're not asking us to adjust their staggering, they're asking us for seven years.
Well, I have just been told that the terms are staggered.
They're already stagnant.
For that particular board, yes.
So, oh, for not, okay, well, we want to look at all boards.
It's not across the board, but for this particular board, they are staggered, and some others are as well.
Well, I think we can get to this really, really soon. Maybe we table this item, we find out what everybody's doing and how they're doing and when they're doing it, and then we'll make some decisions from there.
And Mayor, for clarification purposes, are you tabling this to a date certain?
I would like to come back to this item as quickly as possible.
We can make, I can make a motion to table it to the next Public Works meeting.
It's August the 12th.
And that would be two and a half weeks.
Okay, and can you get us some information on the various boards and how they're staggered?
Uh huh.
And we'll get that out to all the council members, and then we'll discuss it before the next meeting.
So I have a motion to table. I'll need a second.
Motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Excuse me.
Oh.
Jamie Spear wanted to talk. Do you still have something to say?
I can wait until you all...
Maybe, maybe, maybe we can do some talking over the next two weeks? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Okay, item number nine, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2998, supporting the fiscal year 2024-2025 participation of Main Street Muskogee with the Oklahoma Main Street Center, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Motenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is basically a resolution of support when we're saying that we are supporting Muskogee Main Street program, and that way they can work with Oklahoma Main Street Center to receive some necessary funding and grants.
Okay, do we have somebody making a presentation?
No, we do not.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item number 10.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3002, a resolution designating the building located at 401 South Third Street, the historic Frisco Depot, currently housing the Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame, to be essential to government functions or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, the Oklahoma Department of Commerce is working with us to do a major project at the Frisco Depot, the details of which will be unveiled on the 31st of July at 10 o'clock. They've got a two-hour program that they want to work with us to announce this major, major project. I do want to make sure that's on your calendar of July 31st, 10 o'clock to noon. To do that, for their major contribution, they wanted us to have a resolution that is before you today, and so it's a great opportunity and a great partnership for us to work with the Hall of Fame and the state, and so this resolution is a step in the right direction to allow that partnership to happen. I do want to acknowledge that Counselor Stout is Chair of the Hall of Fame Board, and she may have some other things she may want to add to this item as well.
Sure. Yeah, we're very excited. We've had a few different phone calls over the last week on getting down to all the different details of the remodel and everything, so we're excited to make our announcement on the 31st, and with that, I move for approval.
We've got a citizen that wants to speak.
Okay.
And we'll move on. And Jamie, I'm very, very excited with you. This is a great opportunity for Muskogee.
Yes.
And thanks for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Pete Caraway.
I'll get there.
And all you need to say is your name.
Pete Caraway.
Thank you.
I'm not sure on this one. Are we talking about the old wooden structure next to where the old railroad tracks used to be?
It's at 401 South Third, sir.
That's the warehouse?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll be, hate to be this blunt, but I got a real sour taste in my mouth with a music fest and a $90,000 that they went in debt that they wasn't budgeted for, and I think Pat, you and the mayor at the time, Bob Coburn, attended the meeting by the foundation where the chairman of that organization spoke and didn't have a problem with not paying $90,000 to local vendors because he said he was broke and didn't have any money. So that really didn't sit well with a lot of people. The other part in the meeting, and I think you will remember that he didn't take any responsibility because somehow the city was at fault, because his original proposal for the music fest, he said it wasn't even supposed to break even for three years, but that was never said to the council there. I attended several of those meetings back then. That provides, though, that we wouldn't even get out of the red for three or four years at over $1 million a pop each time we had a music fest. He says, it's not my fault, y'all didn't listen to me. You remember that, Pat? I'm paraphrasing, but that's essentially what he said, and I'm personally not mentioning his name. There's no need to rake back through that. I don't know that the music festival or the Music Hall of Fame has been that successful. I know that we've nominated people, and they have the dinners and speeches, and that's gone fairly well, but $3 million? Is it 3 million, if I recall the article in the paper?
Is it 2.4?
Grant for 3 million?
2.4.
Okay, 2.4 million. That's a lot of money. Plus, most of the Music Hall of Fame's across the country have not been successful. There are examples like in, believe it or not, Memphis, you would think, Nashville, Augusta, Georgia, but most of the small, local music museums are not very successful. One of the primary reasons, and if you think back on it, music is more generational. In other words, I like Motown. I like Elvis Presley. I had to move on to the Beatles. We went to... But it is more generational than it is long-term. There are some examples, like in Louisiana, Nashville, where the genre of music presents itself, and you continue because there are the emphasis in Memphis, and Nashville is on music. So I don't see it as being a driving force in Muskogee. Not now, not in the future. I don't mind keeping it open, but why do we want to go 2.4 million even if it's given to us? And that's a biased comment from me, okay? I like a lot of different types of music, but only certain instances does it, some of that music hit a bell with me. I like swing, okay? That's in the '30s, '40s. Raps in Blue is absolutely beautiful, but if you don't have an ear for it and know what's Raps in Blue is absolutely beautiful, but if you don't have an ear for it and know what's going on, you don't appreciate the music. So I'm not opposed to it, I just think we ought to look, look at whether it's been successful.
Thank you.
And that's a lot of money.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Carraway, thank you much.
And I'm sorry for the negative point of view, I, you know, when I come here, I'm the type of person, can I beg a minute?
Mr. Carraway, I'm sorry, there's a five-minute time limit, that cannot be extended.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
Thank you.
So our agenda item tonight is just about a resolution that helps the partnership with the state of Oklahoma to encourage their investment in Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame in the Frisco Depot at 401 South Third Street.
With that, I move for approval.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item number 11, please.
Consider approval of the recommendation from Cowan Group Engineering to award the lowest and best bid for the Three Rivers Roof Replacement Project Number 2024003 to Central Weather Proofing Incorporated in the amount of $181,110, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of this city council. Mr. Jeff Reeves from our Special Projects Division is here to present this item. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Bids were requested and received for the Three Rivers Museum Roofing Project. The existing roofing materials were approaching the end of their useful life, and the roof was proposed by the engineer of record, Michael Taylor, of Cohen Engineering, will match the look and the original design as closely as possible. Four bids were received for the project, and the lowest and best bid was provided by Central Weather Proofing and Roofing. Staff does recommend approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval.
No, I'm sorry, we've got another guest speaker on this.
Okay.
No questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Carraway.
You want me to say Pete Carraway again?
We like to hear your name, please.
All right. I hope that's in a pleasant way.
It is.
Okay, thanks, Pat. I have no problem with doing the building roof, okay? Absolutely zippo problems for me. But I remember something the other day when I read the article. My wife used to volunteer down there, and most of her volunteer work was with Karen Wagner also. But as it would habit later, she had to leave. She spent three years with her mother and father, taking care of them in Georgia. But nonetheless, the, the building was not adequate. They don't have enough storage. At the time, they were cataloging, trying to unpack the boxes, get the pictures, who were in the pictures, get it all sorted out, cataloged, put up in a place that they could retrieve it, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm not sure that that's all been finished yet. If we're going to solve a problem, let's solve the whole mess, okay? If they don't have enough room to do what they need to do and salvage all those old pictures, all the old records that they have from different organizations, society meetings and so forth in Muskogee, why roof the building? Get them a note of building somewhere. So here again, you need to examine your staff, do complete staff work. You go from where you are to where you want to be, and you work out the details. A lot of good ideas are good ideas, just wrong application. And that's an oxymoron. But if you've never thought that way, you better start. If you're going to start on a project, finish it. And make sure it solves most of the problems, more than adequate to solve the problem forever. We're fixing to tear this town apart. The economy, a new president, a new way to think about the traffic in this town, where business is going to occur, where we want to put the police office.
Sir, I'm sorry, you have to stick to the agenda item?
Et cetera. What we do now will last another 150 to 200 years. It better be right. That's it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Carraway.
Can I ask my question now?
You sure may.
So I'm looking at your bid, and I noticed that the group that got the bid did not have a mobilization or removals at the top of theirs, but the company that's right next to them, that didn't. Can you explain to me the difference in that?
There were more than one, if I remember correctly, on the bids that didn't have mobilization on there.
Is that for them to bring their stuff, equipment and everything?
It is used for different applications. Some people or some contractors basically use it to mobilize and show up on site. They consider that to be mobilization. Others, they bring all equipment, trailers, equipment, stage them on site prior to the project starting. It's a subjective way to look at contracting. So the engineer felt it was adequate to cover the project as far as the contractor was concerned. So I've had them where you have an exorbitant amount for mobilization, and I always question that. Having little or none actually makes me feel better, because you're not paying them for driving across town, for driving from Tulsa.
And then the removals are, this, one is on here, it's like 65,000, that's 65,400 for removals, but the guy that we picked doesn't have any. What are they removing? What was their, what was their bid on there for removals, what does that mean?
That, basically, you're removing the roofing system that's currently there. Whether it be on this particular project, on the east side of the project, you had a built-up roofing system, TUR is what they refer to it as, and they will be using TPO to do the wet, the east side of the building. The west side of the building is a metal roofing system. They will remove that metal roofing system and install a new one. Center section is a tile roofing system, and they will be using concrete, reinforced concrete tiles to re-roof it, to basically show or demonstrate that the roof is being done as it was currently or had previously been designed to be.
I was just curious about that, I just wanted to know.
I, there's, there's so many differentiations in bids. I think the engineer looks at total and says, can they get it done for that? The, the engineer's estimate on the project was $250,000. I came in well under that amount. He interviewed them, I checked their licensing, Better Business Bureau credentials, and they've been in business since 2009. So they had good reviews, so I felt confident that they were going to get the job done. You can never tell for sure. Lowest bid sometimes doesn't mean that they're going to be the best bid.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I'll second his motion.
Thank you, thank you. We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item number 12, please.
Consider approval of an agreement on the enhanced 911 emergency system between the City of Muskogee and the Muskogee City-County Enhanced 911 Public Trust Authority, replacing the 2008 inter-local agreement, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute all necessary documents related thereto, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor, this is kind of a complex issue. We have an inter-local agreement that we entered into in 2008, and this was for the 911 authority with the county, or the Board of County Commissioners. What we're looking at doing is setting up a new contract that's directly with the authority versus the Board of Commissioners. So what I need at this time, since we're still in negotiations, is for you to authorize the city manager to continue the negotiations, so I can continue the negotiations, and then terminate the 2008 inter-local agreement if we come to an agreement with the, the new 911 authority. And what this system has to do with is how much we pay. And this, this past fiscal year, we paid $540,000 to the 911, for the 911 costs. And we may be able to do it for, like, cheaper cost and more regulated if we, if we contract directly with the trust authority.
Move for approval.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Item number 13, please.
Consider approval of the reappointment of Paul Birchfield to the Muskogee Medical Center Authority to serve a second seven-year term beginning June 1, 2024, and ending on May 31, 2031, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Tracy Hous.
This is my item. This is a case where a reappointment is kind of necessary where the Muskogee Medical Authority is with the hospital being constructed and everything, and with Mr. Birchfield's background with finance, it's my recommendation to keep him on for a second term.
Second.
That's my motion.
Second. Motion and a second, roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
No.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Item number 14, please.
Discuss and consider adding the official salute to the Oklahoma State flag at the beginning of city meetings, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Melody Cranford.
Sure. During the course of the last few weeks, we have seen some tensions here in the City of Muskogee. And I think that it is befitting for us to remember at this time that we are all Oklahomans. We may have differences of opinion, we may have differences of party, I want us to remember that this chamber is nonpartisan and that all ideas are accepted and should be valued. And so with that being said, I would like for us to begin, the flag is already there, but to add the Oklahoma pledge, it's one sentence, but I think it speaks volumes because it says that these symbols of peace unite all people. And I think that as we say that before we enter into these meetings, then we will respect each other and value each other's opinions more. Thank you.
Second.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Not to put you on spot, but I'd like everybody to know, would, would you please recite that pledge?
Sure. What you would do usually for the American flag, place your hand over your heart, right after that, you would take your hand down, your right hand is out towards the flag, and you stand and say, "I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma, as symbols of peace unite all people."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Real good. We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Item number 15, please.
Discuss and provide possible direction to staff related to the residency requirement for board and commission members, and possible amendments to the same, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Dan Hall.
Hello, everybody. This is my agenda item, and it's kind of been an interesting topic. It's kind of like the conversations that I've been having with the people from out in our community. Very concerned about us overloading the boards and stacking boards in Muskogee, and that's neither here nor there. But some, we keep moving forward for seven years. Every, we started out at four, then they moved to five, and then they moved to seven. And so I called our city attorney and asked her if we could put on an agenda item to possibly put some kind of an ordinance together that we could have some consistency in our boards and how we appoint people. And I was like, yeah, I can do this, and so we're all excited and we're kicking along. And then some people, when I started talking to other, these people that have been talking to me, they started bringing up that we're starting to push outside of the city limits of Muskogee. And I would like to see us to make some adjustments to this because we have people from Broken Arrow, we have people from Cherokee County, and they say we have one other person that's on one of our trust boards that lives outside the city limits of Muskogee. And the way I kind of look at this is, is when I get my paycheck every month, I'm one of those people that have to live month to month like everybody else, but it's, I don't want someone, someone else to come into my house and tell me how to spend my paycheck. And I want to make sure that I'm benefiting my household. Well, being from Muskogee and having a Muskogee Foundation and several trusts, and we give several people money, we're allowing people from outside of our community to come in here and dictate to us and vote how we spend that money. I would have never, ever set people on our trusts and our boards that live outside the city limits of Muskogee. I just don't think it's right. I know that if, I went, I got some friends up at Broken Arrow. I talked to them, I said, "I'm going to come up and be on y'all's boards and trusts," and they said, "You don't live here." I'm like, "Okay." I called Telequal, "Hey, can I come over and be on your boards and trusts?" "Nope, you can't be on my boards and trusts either, Dan, you live in Muskogee. You can't run for Ward Two City Council unless you live in Muskogee. You can't run for mayor unless you live in the city limits of Muskogee." I would love, and then another little thing here is, is that we have been stacking two-year terms. We're going to, people back to, back up terms. Well, under Section 704, appointments to boards and commissions and trusts, council's appointments to boards and commissions and trusts will, with the exceptions of the Merit System Board, Section 4.5, and Civil Service Commission, Section 412. So if you put us, even in Muskogee, if you put someone on a board without a year between them, it is illegal appointments. I didn't realize that till about an hour ago. So we've put all these people on these boards, and we got them in for their second term, and they're supposed to have a year in between them, I found out, is what they're saying. I don't know if that's true or not, but.
We don't, we don't do that, Dan.
They, on the boards?
They have a year between.
Okay, it's under our deal.
They have a year between.
Okay, so I noticed like earlier when we had the back-to-back seven, the two terms, there's not a year between there.
They just passed that, but all of the other boards, there's always a year in between unless it specifically states they do not have to sit off the board.
Okay, it's an ordinance, so I didn't know if we changed it or not.
It's enforced, and it has been since 2015.
Okay, so that was brought to my attention a while ago, and one of the things that they pushed to me. So I would really like to see us move all boards and trusts, if it possible, to a, to four-year terms. And I would like to set a, something in this agenda, to this ordinance, that all people on these boards and trusts have to live in the city limits of Muskogee, especially when it's dealing with money that the city has given to these boards and trusts. Now, again, I'm one person, and maybe I'm the only one that thinks this way besides some of the citizens. But I thought I'd bring it for you and have this discussion.
Thank you. I've got some thoughts. I think staff's going to try to put together some of these boards and what their, what, what their rules are. And I think it might, that might be helpful to us. It might be that some of these boards have things staggered in different years, and there might be good reason. I don't know that there is, I don't know that there isn't, but there might be good reason for that. I think that I could consider no out-of-town members, but I would hate, but I would not support that unless we grandfathered the. support that unless we grandfathered the current members serving on boards personally. But I think we'll get a lot, we'll be able to come up with some policy when we see what and why and where these boards are working. And there may be a good reason for some of them to be seven, there may not be, I don't know. But...
Well, I don't mind the stagger because we're staggered up here. Councilman Stout is on a different assist at times than I am. I don't mind the stagger, I just don't think we need to have seven-year staggers. We're up here for four years. I would like to see it four years because that way it kind of rolls with like what we're doing. If the way it is, some person could be up here for seven years and they're sitting there trying to figure out how to get people off, and I'm just trying to figure out a way to make our boards and trusts more Muskogee and less and more about transparency. I think we have a lot of people in Muskogee that would love to be on boards and trusts and still just regurgitating the same people over and over again and putting them on there. And I've seen that when I was on 12 years ago, I've seen it all the way up until I got off, and it's kind of started again. When we put the same people on boards over and over, that tells me either we're lazy about picking people or we're stacking the board. And I think we have a lot of intelligent people in Muskogee that should have an opportunity to be on these boards and sit on these boards. So, and like I said, I'm not mad about this, I'm just trying to fix it so it, so people can serve on boards and we're not blocking people that, the next generation of people coming on that may want to serve, and we're like, well, you got to wait seven years because the person in your area can't be on, they're not coming off. I think four years is plenty. So, and again, and when you said that you'd like to see the people from out of town stay on the board, grandfathered in, are we talking about permanently or until this, until this term ends?
Well, toward, when their term ends.
Okay, that they wouldn't be reappointed?
No.
Okay, I'm good. All right.
Can I, can I say something? Are you saying you don't think people that live outside those, if they live outside the city limits, you don't think they should be able to be on a board?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that we have people in Muskogee that are as intelligent as the people that live out in the county, and I think we should find those people and put them on those boards. I don't have anything against the people that are sitting up there, other than it's a city board and a city trust, and they need to be from inside the city limits because it's their account, it's their money. They need to be the one making, help make those decisions for our city. I don't have a problem with the people that are living in these other cities, I just think it should be a Muskogee thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On Agenda Item Number Eight, you know, we agreed to table that. I think it's, it's the same discussion. That one specifically was about the Muskogee Transit Authority Board, right?
Tourism.
Or tourism, I mean.
But, same discussion.
But it's the same issue.
Yeah.
And it seems to me if we table one in order to get more input, more feedback maybe from some of the people, we're going to make a much more informed decision. And it would seem to me that if we're going to table one, that we should table them both until we get that input from those, from those folks.
Yes, the two certainly can be combined. I've got a question to ask the clerk. From my experience, there are boards that people would kill to get on, and there are boards that you've got to lie, beg, and steal, try to get somebody to serve. Is that, is that not the case, or do we easily fill all boards?
We do not easily fill all boards. We have an application process. They're welcome to fill out an application for any board at any time during the year. When those applications come in, if they specify a certain board, when that vacancy comes up on that board, whoever is the appointing council member, I give them that application, let them know they're interested. It's up to the council member if they want to appoint that person or not.
Sure.
We don't always have applications.
But regardless of that process, there are boards that we seem to have trouble filling.
Yes, that is a correct statement.
So just keep that in mind with all the good people in Muskogee. We, we have boards that we have trouble filling. So we'll keep that in mind as part of this whole discussion. Dan, would you mind tabling this? And, and we'll get communicate, we'll get information from the city clerk, and then we can meet, you know, maybe have a luncheon over this thing after we all get, that we can get, offer our own input when we get, when we know exactly what we're talking about on everything.
Yeah, I wasn't planning on for us to actually even push it through tonight. I was just more of a discussion to see. It's just amazing that even your agenda item, how many people called me and were like, surely y'all aren't going to do that. And I'm like, oh my gosh. And I said, I have an agenda item on that matches this. So I wasn't really expecting us to vote and push it through tonight. It was more to direct staff to help us figure out some avenues on this. Like I said, I'm not mad at anybody for being on a board. I'm glad that they are, especially the ones from out of town. I'm glad they think, want to be a part of Muskogee. I just, I just have a problem when it's, especially like the foundation board and the trust and all that kind of stuff, that we couldn't have found professionals in Muskogee to be on that board and trust. And I think it, it's just not, it's kind of interesting that, that we went out of city to find those people. And I don't have a problem with tabling it and letting them come back with some more information. I'm just, I just wanted to put it out there where we're at.
Thank you. Do we, do we table this or just no action needed?
There's just no action needed, but I would like direction to do some legal research on this issue. I'm not sure that we can dictate terms to the trust authorities. I know that we can the boards and commissions.
And, and that's, that's what we rely on you, so we'll rely on you to kind of report back as to, here, with help from the clerk, here are all the boards, here's what their bylaws or their rules are, and here's some other added information that you can and can't do.
Okay, that would be good. And there, we have 23 boards and commissions, so this will take us a little bit of time to get all this together.
And, and I was on city council when we had, Derek, how many boards did we have when we narrowed them down?
I can't remember the number. We did have a, you did cut them down at one point.
And that's another thing that I would like to look at, consider on this, this, since it's, I want to be, kind of be an ordinance, is that, and kind of a guideline for the boards and trusts, is that the boards weren't getting done, what, there was a few people trying to get stuff done and they weren't getting it done. So they started developing subcommittees inside their boards that were manipulating the main body of the board. I would like to see how many people actually have all those subcommittees inside those boards, that we might want to help alleviate some of that because, like I said, you put those people on the board to make decisions, and there's a few people that are the guiding people on it that are making decisions over in the corner, we can't have that. So...
Okay. No action needed on that. Item number 16, please.
Discuss and take possible action on the creation of a new council policy, restoring the seniority of previously elected city council members, provide direction to staff, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Dan Hall.
This is going to be an easy one tonight. It looks like I picked on a whole bunch of stuff here. This will be an easy one. And if Ms. Tracy will oblige me on this, I know that she's a busy person, but I would love to make this as easy as possible. When I first got elected, I was like thinking that there was a bridge to our seniority, and I found out that there wasn't, and that's no fault of Ms. Tracy's. When we were on city council last time, we were, they brought in a person that was on city council before, and they said, "Oh, she gets to step up above y'all because of her seniority previous." It's the way it is. We got an ordinance that says that. Well, after talking to Ms. Tracy and to our lovely city attorney over there, they said, "No, you don't." So we relied to. And I'm going to say it out in open on TV and everything, we relied to. And so I would love for us to figure out some method in the future to guide city councils when they come on, if they come on after they've been on previously and they get off and they come back on. I would like to set some guidelines that tell, yeah, you can bridge back up where you, where your seniority, or you can't. And I don't know if Ms. Tracy has any time to like help us build something like that, a list of rules, because you already got rules in place that you go by, and those are perfectly fine. I just think that we need to put them in writing.
The rules that I go by, Dan, are the ones that are set by council. Those are the only rules that I follow.
Okay.
And as far as the previous council member, that was before my time in the clerk's office.
And I'm aware of that. It wasn't you and I, I thought I made that clear. But, so was, is there a policy set aside that I didn't get?
There is no policy on bridging time.
There's no policy on how we fall in line either, is there?
Yes, it is set by seniority and then alphabetically.
Okay, and where's that written?
In the ordinance for the board appointments, it states it's up to the city clerk to determine after seniority how it's done. If you can find a better way than alphabetically that's fairer, I'm more than happy to discuss it with you.
Well, and that's what I was talking about, is that it's still left with you. And then when I asked you if I could bridge up, you kind of said, "No, it's the way I do it." But the point is, is that I don't want to argue that part. But I don't want the next city clerk to have to have the same conversation that we're That there is no bridge, and that's what we need to have it in. And something needs to be in writing in that policy, that it says there is no bridge, and you get off, you come back on, you're at the bottom where you're at.
That would be up to the council to decide, not for me.
But that's what I'm trying to get to right now.
May I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
I'm all in favor for a policy that says there's no bridge. I think seniority is determined by your length of continuous service. I mean, the thing is with seniority, I don't care about the roll call vote, but I know we've been so much on board appointments that, board appointments is determined by that also, am I correct?
That is correct.
And, and we, I just did a little bit of research on this, too. It's pretty much the way it is, is that any time you, you stop, whenever you get, have a gap in service, when you come back and get reelected, you generally starting off at zero again, starting, you know, your day starts at zero again. I think that if we let a policy where you could kind of bridge in or give seniority, that's going to just play right into good old boy politics. What says I won't strategically drop off a board, put someone else on, because I know they give seniority and take, you know, the port pick from, from Council Abel. I mean, it's a dangerous thing to really get into. I don't think that's where we get in bridging. I think that's probably why that policy's practiced at most communities.
I agree. And I've talked to others on the council that agree as well. Here's a question. I don't know that it's necessary, but Ms. Bowdenhammer, could we write up a little something or have it on a piece of paper that says, "This is the way we do it? This is the way we've always done it, and this is the way we're always going to do it?" Or is it, is it redundant? Are we making a bunch of work we don't need to make?
Well, I mean, council has the choice to direct staff to create a policy, and it can be however you want it worded, depending on what direction you want to give us, if that makes any sense. So if you want us to draft a policy that, of the current policy, do a written policy on that, we can do that. It just depends on what direction we get.
I would love to amend it where it says there's no bridge. I just think that it was done to us, and I wouldn't like to see it done again.
Don't want to see it done to anybody?
I don't want to see it done to anybody else again.
Then could we, how might we, Mr. Hall and Mr. Hous and myself and others feel the same way, what, how would you recommend we go ahead with direction?
Well, at this point, just give us direction to draft an ordinance, and Ms. Tracy and I can work on this, that reflects the current procedure and standing of council members and talk about whether or not there's a bridge. So we can, we can reduce to writing what the current policy is and bring that back to council.
Okay.
Mayor, is there, is there any policy now for like if you work at the police department and you leave from there, and then you come back? I don't think they have a policy in place that says you don't get your time. How does that, maybe, manager, you can?
So for, for our employees, we've had this discussion this week. For employees, they start over on their seniority, they start over on longevity pay.
Is there anything in policy, or they just, everybody just knows that?
I don't know off the top of my head, honestly. We just do, that's how we've done it, and we have done that with a police officer that started over with seniority as well.
True. And I guess also, Dan, I don't really understand the, the goal. I don't know what, what are we going for if we, on your end?
My goal is, is that when we were on last time that happened to us...
So you're saying, since they told you it was that way?
Yeah, they just told us it was that way, and it really wasn't.
Okay.
To manipulate the situation if they wanted.
So, Dan, just to be clear, when you say that, you're not talking about any of the staff?
There's nobody here that's here that was on that staff.
I just want to, wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Okay. So, there was nobody here except for me and Derek, and we were on city council, and...
Thanks.
You hear that?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we do what she said. That we take Ms. Bowdenhammer's suggestion that her and the clerk work together and to try to deliver what we're wanting here, which is basically clarification.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was my motion. I have a second.
Second.
Can I say something?
Yes, you can.
I've always thought it was real clear what we could do. We don't do seniority. We go start a new slate. Can we not vote on that right now if we want a new policy, or we...
We're not.
We don't want to do that?
No, here's, and we may not want to do this. All we are doing is reaffirming that policy.
Our policy, okay.
Yeah, we're reaffirming that. We're making it crystal clear.
What our policy is.
That you don't get your seniority when you come back.
Okay, got it. Perfect.
So you're going to be my second.
I'll, you're second.
I, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Item number 17, please.
Discuss City of Grants Pass versus Johnson, a recent United States Supreme Court ruling issued on June 28, 2024, related to city's regulation of homeless populations and its effect on the possible creation of City of Muskogee ordinances, or take other necessary action.
Okay, before council starts with Mr. Hall and Ms. Bowdenhammer, we have a Gordon Harland that would like to come up and speak. Mr. Harland?
Mr. Mayor, council, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gordon Keith Harland. I'm a, I'm a original Okie from Muskogee, a graduate of the class of 1978 of Muskogee High School. And I've lived at 503 North 17th Street, where my family has owned that home for 56 years. I'm also the director of Crisis Services for Green Country Behavioral Health, which means I run the crisis unit, our kids' crisis unit that we're about to open, our 988 teams, and our mobile crisis teams. My reason for speaking tonight is twofold. Muskogee is like every other town in America. We have a homeless problem. However, our traditional ways of working with this population, it's not working. And I don't believe that asking our law enforcement to, our law enforcement officers believe that asking our law enforcement to, our, our law enforcement officers to ticket homeless people is the answer. First of all, they won't be able to pay. They will continue to rack up fines until a warrant is issued for their arrest. I can't imagine adding more nonviolent offenders to our overcrowded jail, jail population is going to make our community any better. Our first problem is that it's advertised that we have a shelter in Muskogee. Let me make it clear, we do not have a shelter in Muskogee. What we have is a religious-based, high-barrier, strict work program. Persons arriving in Muskogee expecting a shelter when they, and when they refuse to adhere to the rules of the Gospel Rescue Mission, they're put out by the panel, out on the streets of Muskogee. It's not our mission at Green Country to have a shelter program, but we could certainly most offer a, a day program, better yet, a day resource center for people, for people who are homeless. A place where a person could go to access services like access to jobs, access to healthcare, access to substance abuse treatment or mental health treatment, access to affordable housing and access to things that we take for granted, like being able to take a shower or to even to wash your clothes. A day resource center could also provide access to no barriers. We need a no barriers day center for people who have pets to take care of themselves. There are tiny house programs that have been successful in all parts of the country. A nonprofit runs Austin's, um, first community village, Austin, Texas. This is an idea that was started in two thousand and six and by two thousand, by two thousand and eight they had over fifty one tiny homes. Being out of the city limits where a lack of zoning laws limiting the power of neighbors could stop the bill was helpful, but they didn't. In twenty twenty two, there were nearly four hundred residents in the village. Typical type, a typical, typical tiny home is about two hundred square feet furnished with a kitchenette, a bed and a recliner. The residents have a community kitchen and community washers and dryers. Planned expansion could add space for an additional fourteen hundred tiny homes. What this requires is commitment from the community. Quite frankly, find money, location and a provider to, to manage some form of programs like this, it would get people off the streets and it would give purpose in our community. McCown Village in Norman has a similar program that houses thirty two formerly homeless program families. Cottage range from three fifty, three fifty eight to seven hundred square feet and obviously they had, um, investors to get started, but literally it's a fresh start. Again, ensuring that there is someone to manage the program, but no barriers. Another option, Green Country in collaboration with the city, we started a program called Project Reunite, where we would find if there, if police officers found homeless people that are out on the streets, we could take, we could send them home. And we've been doing that for a couple of years now. We make sure that somebody has someplace to go, that we're not picking, making, somebody's not going somewhere else to be homeless, but we make sure that we're doing that. We've done a good job with that. The bottom line is, traditional answers to solve this problem aren't working. And I believe that criminali, criminalizing homelessness is not the answer. Green Country is in this for the long haul and we are, along with the city and any other organizations, willing to put forth the time and the effort to help, to help, to do all we can to help reduce homelessness in Muskogee. We're ready to do the work, to make changes that contribute to the success of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Actually, Mayor, if I can do a, a quick summary of the new law?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. So on, on June twenty eighth, this, this ruling came down. It's something that was, um, highly anticipated by, by attorneys throughout the nation because it's a landmark ruling and it changes the interpretation of this section of the const- of the United States Constitution. Um, originally, there was a case called Robinson. In that case, it was decided that there were certain measures for cruel and unusual punishment. And the council in this case, in this specific case tried to use that argument that criminalizing homelessness was a cruel and unusual punishment. The Supreme Court determined that it was not. They said there were different measures under the Robinson case as compared to this case. This case started with, uh, the City of Grants Pass. Johnson and a group sued the, the city because they, they would break down homeless camps, put them in jail, cite them, give them tickets, that sort of thing. And they basically were criminalizing being homeless. The Supreme Court said they are not, they are not criminalizing homeless. They are criminalizing, setting up camps on sidewalks that included whether or not it was students, that include whether or not it was people just coming through the city. Um, so it therefore was not cruel and unusual punishment because it didn't distinguish a, a specific group of people. It got anybody who was camping and out and homeless. Now, the issue that comes with this, um, is that we have the, the option to criminalize homeless encampments in Muskogee. And if we do that, then what do we do with the people and how do we manage that? We, if we, if we ticket the people, um, I think that was a good argument made on that of they don't have the money for fines, if they don't have the money for housing. They end up in the county jail, the city pays for their, their stay. I think it's fifty six dollars a day, I think, is what we're paying right now for jail fees. You know, we have nowhere to put children. So we need to come up with some kind of policy or some kind of ordinances that can effectively deal with this situation. And that's why I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hall.
And, and I have been talking to, uh, Katrina about this for a little bit and then she advised me of the, uh, court case that says that we can do something. And don't get me wrong, I'm not here to criminalize the homeless, okay? What I am here to do is protect our citizens and to protect the children that I'm, I'm hired to protect at the school district every day. Some of the situations that we've had is, we've had a c- encampment up by Saddle Arts Academy, which has had multiple tents just right in the back of our, in the wooded area between our house and where you work. Uh, there's been one murder up there. Uh, there's been several cases where they've used this splash pad for showering and, you know, part of me said, you know, if you had a swimsuit on, I'm off work. But when they're out there standing nude and there's kids trying to be on the playground, we have a problem. Uh, one lady was out there pregnant, a homeless person was out there pregnant, you haven't done, having a shower. Um, I've had a couple people talk to me about going to our library and taking their kids to the library and they can't walk down the sidewalk because everybody's got all their crap sitting out on the, on the sidewalk. The one reason that I thought about bringing this up for is to see if there's something that we could come up with is, uh, maybe our parks, our, uh, our city, our city property, our school districts or something, to make it unlawful for them to continue to, uh, set up these encampments on these properties where other people are trying to enjoy them, but they leave them trashed up and they leave needles, they leave, uh, broken bottles, they leave just everything you can imagine and they just leave. Uh, I felt really sorry for a guy about two or three months ago. He was at the high school. Uh, I said, you know what? I don't have a problem with you staying on that right here. Here's you a couple bottles of water. Here's you a Powerade. Have a good day. Uh, I'll come back tomorrow. Just make sure you put up all your stuff. He kicked over, I went back and watched the video. He kicked over the trash can, flipped over the picnic table and I'm going, okay. Apparently he didn't want to be, you to be, me to be nice to him. So these are the problems that I think we need to justify, uh, not so much criminalizing, but sometimes they do commit crimes that, uh, affect our citizens. And I appreciate y'all trying to go, I've seen where there's other organizations, com- communities that do the, uh, find them, how to get them back home. And we also gotta realize that there's other communities sending people to Muskogee and it's not their home. And we have become a dump site and for homeless people. They have a problem child, a problem of homeless person in Tulsa, they bring them down here, per se. Like, that's what they're telling us, that they're bringing them down here. Uh, they have one in the south, city south of us, they bring them here. I don't know who brings them, but somebody's bringing them from these other cities. For a long time, we were so scared to put things in place to protect our citizens from this behavior. And now we can say enough is enough. It doesn't have to be so much that we criminalize people, but maybe if we put some ordinances in place and tell them, hey, if you do this in Muskogee, um, you're gonna go to jail or this could happen to you. And maybe we could start curbing some of these bad behaviors before we end up with a lot worse behaviors. Uh, I was in Oklahoma City over the weekend, me, my wife and, uh, my brother-in-law and all, we were walking, uh, down the street right there by the National. And this homeless guy, his dog, asked my father-in-law for some money and he says, not right now. And he gets up and starts following us and yelling at him and making threats to him until I had to get him in between them. And then we kept walking and separated ourselves, but he followed us all the way down the block yelling and screaming and making threats to us. But I don't want that to start happening here in Muskogee. We haven't had a lot of that, but we need to fix this before it gets there. And I'm open for suggestions from the rest of the city council.
May I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, one of the things that we are doing, we have our, our, uh, city staff task force. We also have a council committee that was formed. Um, I want to thank Keith for coming. He's part of, in Green Country, part of our process that we have in place that we're trying to find, uh, recommendations. The library system is working with us. Um, this has to be done with wraparound supports. The police are working with us. A lot of times, and, and I've been out with them on calls where a lot of this is mental health issues. So there's a lot of, that's going into homelessness and some of these people are citizens of the City of Muskogee. They were born and raised here. So while we're having this conversation, we want to remember to, again, treat everybody with respect because a lot of these people are just, poverty is a real issue here. And a lot of people live below average and they are citizens of the City of Muskogee. Our question tonight needs to be, what are we going to do because we don't have any facility? Grants Pass was very different from Muskogee. They had facilities and they were offering citizens to either go to this facility or be fined. We don't have a facility. We don't have things to offer. If our police officers pick up anybody or stop anybody, they don't have, they don't have a second offering, except the jail. And that is on the City of Muskogee. That is not on people who are, have mental issues. That is not on families who live beyond, below poverty levels. That is on the City of Muskogee. So I would like for us to have some time to get together, some wraparound supports, so that we can help our police officers because just sending them out there and they're not equipped to deal with mental issues that they're facing and a lot of it is that's what it is. We don't have day shelters. We don't have the things in place for them to not be at the library seeking air when it's a public facility that's open to them. So, uh, without, uh, we've done, I've worked with people who have done pilot cars, so that people could just take a shower. Without that support, there, you're gonna find people in a splash pad. I hate that that happened because that person had had to have lost all dignity. They had to think through the process of showering naked at a splash pad because they don't have a shower. They don't have a home. That takes a lot of mental fortitude to do. And so I think we're gonna have to think about this from a different perspective and not just look at the finding. And, and Grants Pass, they made it clear when they started their process that they did not want homeless people in Grants Pass. And they would do everything possible to make sure that the people didn't feel like they could be there. And I don't think that that is the tone that Muskogee wants to set. We don't want to say that we don't want you here because again, a lot of these people are citizens of Muskogee. We do want to say we want to help you. And if you refuse help, sure, then there has to be some other measure taken. But before we do that other measure, we have to make sure that we've got some things in place. So, um, if we could have an opportunity for the council committee, the task force to work together with these other organizations that are willing to come and partner with us, I think that we can get some things done. So just asking for a little leniency tonight.
So what else do y'all have plans until then and to keep our citizens safe from some of these people?
Well, first of all, safety, um, you stepping over a person and not feeling safe and a person grabbing something of yours and you not feeling safe is two different things. I think that the first thing is we can't stereotype a person because they're in a position. So just because a person is laying on the ground doesn't mean they're going to harm you. Just because a person is without doesn't mean they're going to steal to get, which is probably why they're laying there. So some of the things that we are doing, first of all, is educating the community. So the community understands what's happening around them with the homeless population. That's the first thing. Education is the key piece to this. Secondly, educating our police officers so that they know the difference between a person that is violent and a person that is needing mental assistance so that they can dial that nine eight eight number and get Keith and his staff over to that person so that we can do the things that we need to do. Police officers are checking driver's licenses and things like that and referring them again to Green Country, which is a great support for us in the City of Muskogee, so that they can get them through the process of Project Reunite. So there are lots of facets that go into what we're doing already on the ground. And I think that if we had time to work with these committees and all of those groups that are willing to help, we could do great things in the City of Muskogee because, again, Grants Pass, six hundred homeless people in that population that they could not house and thousands that they did house. It's a great difference of number from the City of Muskogee, where we're looking at maybe sixty to seventy hundreds. I'm out and I'm giving bags. We're looking at maybe, at the most part, a hundred people. So while we have this low number, we could work together to really do something without finding these families.
And, uh, everything that I'm talking about not necessarily has to have a fine involved with it, but.
Well, that's the Grants Pass ruling.
Yeah, but when we have a, a homeless person that attacks someone, then they need to be fined or jailed.
That, well, that would be a criminal charge. That would not be, could do to their homelessness. That would be due to the crime.
We're talking about the actual criminal stuff that they're doing, not just, but we need to protect our citizens. And all these projects are awesome and wonderful and I'm glad that you're working that way. But at the end of the day, there's thirty six thousand people live here and you said about a hundred of them are homeless. And I want all of them to be safe. I want the homeless people to be safe. I want our citizens to be safe. I want people to be able to walk at the lib, to the library and not worry about being scared to go in that library. I'm not talking about they're laying there and, and they're not, and it's how you feel about it. It's not about feel. It's about when they feel threatened and there's a crime getting ready to happen to them. Not all these homeless people are innocent and not all of them are criminals. I realize all that. But at the end of the day, we as a city council are held responsible. We're gonna put things in place to make sure our citizens are safe and live a happy life and where they work, live and play.
That's true. So when we're, while we're working on this, can we get some documentation from the police department that shows us the, uh, rate of crime committed by homeless populations? And I think that that would be something that we could move forward with, uh, again, prioritizing who we help first. If they are, uh, criminalizing, if they are doing things, if they are, um, a public safety or a public health risk to someone, then we would prioritize them, um, higher risk and help them first. But again, I don't want us to stereotype people that are at the library because, um, there's not a lot of crime happening at the library from these people. They're just seeking refuge in the heat and finding a place, a facility. And I don't want the library to become a day shelter because we don't have one.
I think it would be difficult to find out who was committing crimes as homeless and who wasn't because I don't think they keep stats on that, particularly. It'd just be crimes in general.
Right.
So they wouldn't know who was doing it in the records division anyways. And our police department, I'll tell you that I've, I've was there for twenty-two years and I know that they try every way possible to help somebody before they try to find somebody.
Right.
So they're, they're doing the job that you're saying right now. And they're not behind times on any of that. Um, I also know that what Mr. Hall's saying is, they already, everything's already in place to protect all of our citizens from each other, from everybody, from whatever crime. It, I don't know that there's something that would be directed at one group and say, we need to do this because we already have laws for sleeping in public, sleeping in public places, in the park after hours. All of that's already in place and it's already all enforced. Um, I do appreciate Green Country. I've worked with them a lot. Uh, but I will tell you where the downfall is, is at night. After hours, you can't call Green Country. You can't call, there's a few hotlines you could call, but nobody's coming. These guys are out in their patrol car with these people on their own. And most of the time, you're not gonna get anybody from any, any organization to show up at midnight and help you with somebody that's homeless that needs help. You're gonna be stuck with them. And so a lot of times, your only recourse is to charge them with whatever crime you have available to get them somewhere safe so maybe the next day you can get them some help. So just to be clear, a lot of this is already taken care of.
Right.
It's a lot of redundancy that I'm hearing.
The police department is working very well with us.
They, they do great. They always have, so.
And they have training that they taught how to handle the people with mental issue or issues, uh.
And not just homeless people with this, everybody with issues, so.
Right. But this was brought up just to kind of figure out if we could figure out some way because it started to be a problem here. And, um, giving them, and I understand to get, give them some kind of shelter, but at one point, uh, they were getting tents from people here in town and they were camping on our tent, our school property. Uh, even though we had no trespassing, they moved ten feet into the wooded area behind Saver and it became a problem. Kids were out. Kids were out playing, and then they come out to be with them, and we had to pull all the kids off the playground. Other issues like that, at our, up on Buffalo Drive with our, what camp Bennett they have. I have to go through there every morning and go, hey, guys, it's time to go.
Counselor, I think you've made it pretty clear. Ms. Cranford, you say we've got a couple of committees that have put together to deal with this. It would be nice if you could get with Mr. Hall, and maybe he might have an opportunity or want to serve on some of these committees. I'm sure that you've probably reached out to folks like Mr. Harland, and you're working with people. Let's, let's continue down that path and see what good things can come of it, and, and then go from there. Meanwhile, like Counselor Abel says, there are other things in place that, that can take care of a lot of this. It is a big problem, and I'd like to see us have some positive ideas and, and positive ways to help deal with some of, some of the problems and some of the poor people that need help. Do we need to do anything other than discuss this item?
Not if there's not a motion made for something specific or direction to staff, if you're talking about the committees getting together and Mr. Hall being involved.
I mean, that doesn't need to be, that just needs to be an offer.
The committee's already had a mandate from the council.
Yeah, we, we have a committee, I'm on it with Melody.
Okay.
The council's created that committee.
All right. Thank you for that. Item number eighteen, please.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number Ninety-Five, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local Number Twenty-four Sixty-five, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty-seven, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D pursuant to 307c11 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to an economic development project, including the possible transfer of real property in the northwest quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
Okay.
You can motion to move to executive session.
Thank you. Second. We have a motion and a second. Row call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. We're now in executive session. We're returning to a regular session. Row call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
CB Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Ms. Bodenham.
Thank you. Item eighteen A pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number Ninety-Five, and no action is needed on this item. Item eighteen D pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Lawyers, Local Number Twenty-four Sixty-five, and no action is needed. Item eighteen D pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Internal Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty-seven, and no action is necessary on this item. Item eighteen D pursuant to 307c11 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to an economic development project, including the possible transfer of real property in the northwest quadrant of the city, and no action is needed on, on this item.
Okay. Thank you. This concludes the city council meeting. Next is MRA. We will now call to order the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Row call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Present.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Okay, item number one, please.
Consider approval of minutes of June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Row call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of Muskogee Redevelopment Authority claims for June fifteen, two thousand twenty-four through July twelve, two thousand twenty-four, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the authority, you have afforded the claims of the MRA, and would you recommend approval?
Move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Row call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item number three, please.
Pursuant to Section 307b4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the status of Davis versus Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, CJ dash two zero two three dash three two, and EEOC complaint five six four dash two zero two two dash zero one five eight four, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
Okay, do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Row call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.